This time I'll open the July meeting of the Board of Education for Ardel State's full school systems. This month, there was not a committee of the whole meeting, so we'll just have our Board of Education meeting tonight. Begin the meeting with a moment of silence where we ask the community members and board members to reflect privately and quietly in their own way and ask that you will please pray for us as we go about doing the work of the school system for the betterment of our children. We'll take a moment of silence. Thank you. This time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members and Dr. James, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Chairman Carver, underneath Section 1, Item A, COVID update and mass discussion. After the ending of last school year, we no longer have to do that on a monthly basis, so we'll remove that from the agenda moving forward.
Thank you.
So the next change, if you'll go down to non-consent agenda, Item Number 7C, strike that from the agenda. We're going to have further discussion about that at the Committee of the Whole.
We'll put that on in August.
Yes.
Okay.
And so on that same section, we need to add Item H, Northview Academy approval, the name change. We've moved Presley to Northview, so we'll have to get board permission to change the name. And then Item I, sale of Mountmore property. And that's all the changes I have.
All right. Any other board member adjustments to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda.
I have a motion from Mr. Schumaker, second from Mr. Howell, to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So we've amended the agenda. Mr. Shatley, it's, who's doing Kelly's? Is that Jada tonight?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure that somebody was doing that. I just noticed that and I wanted to make sure that we were on track for that. Okay. Anyway, I just want to make sure it's getting done. So then, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight, which includes a personnel report and two sets of minutes? Motion by Mr. Page, second by Mr. Kelly. Any further discussion on the consent agenda for tonight? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. So we've approved the consent agenda. Next is our public comment, period? Zero? Public comment. Outstanding. Moving on to the non-consent agenda then. Agenda Item A, pay increases and bonuses for local, state, and federal employees, Dr. James and Mr. Steele and Ms. Gillum, I believe.
Shall I ask Mr. Steele if he would, approach the podium, just to bring you up to speed on where we've applied money. There's about three or four different buckets that Adam will talk about, but sort of where we've put that money at. And of course, we've done several board meetings where we give you, we've given you line item expenditures for all the ESRS money. And before that, it was what, an ARA? What was the, it was one right before ESRS, but altogether about $48 million.
ARA, edge jobs.
It's quite a few different budgets, but that's okay. But Adam's going to run through some, some of where the money went.
All right. Jay, does there a PowerPoint that goes with it? Do y'all have it in front of you? You all have the PowerPoint?
But if they've got it, I really would like for the public to be able to see it. There we go. Jada, do you think you have it? Okay. All right.
So while, while she's doing that, so we'll talk a little bit about classified pay highlights for Ardel State's full schools. So I worked with HR, went back through Melissa's notes, went back through the state budget to figure out where, okay, what has Ardel done in the last year, maybe two years with classified pay? So the state gave a 2.5% increase for '21, '22. Then also, Ardel State's went to an anniversary step bump from two steps every five years to now three steps every five years. That's a big change. You see many districts that are not doing step increases. That, that is one. There was a salary study in Region 7, which was previous region I was in. I know Ardel, Hickory, and a couple others in our report that we received was commended for doing step increases. A lot of districts pulled back from step increases back '08, '09, '10, '11, that timeframe. So being able to offer a step increase is huge for a district, even if it's the three steps every five years. So that's something that we're going to continue to do. We may have to look at some changes going forward, but we'll talk about that as we go forward with budget processes. The classified supplement went from 4.85% to 5.35%. That is a very, I would say, for, compared to other districts, that is a good supplement for your classified employees. Many other districts, the district I came from, we did not provide a classified supplement. Catawba County's at 3%. So that is a very healthy classified supplement for their, their employees.
And Mr. Steele, just for people who aren't in education, explain, that's a pay bonus based on your base salary?
Base salary, so 5.
5.35% of your base salary in the form of a bonus?
Well, it's, it's not even a bonus. It's just with your November and December, you included in that check.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Could you also, just for the public's, just expound on classified, who classified are versus, because sometimes in, in educationees, we use our own vocabulary.
So classified employees are TAs, any clerical office support, maintenance, bus drivers, custodians, child nutrition. And if I miss anybody, I hate when I miss a classified employee. There's so many. Dr. James, can you think of anybody else within that category?
Basically, not teachers and not administration.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I got you off track there. I apologize. I just want to make sure people understand it.
So yeah, that, the supplement is paid in November and June. Then, we also, Ardel State's full, bus drivers, school nutrition, and primetime received increases to the base step wage which they were on because, for hard-to-fill positions. So we, Ardel looked at that as a district and said, these are hard-to-fill positions that we're having trouble with last year. Let's, you know, increase the base step that they're on. And then also, if you look at a step increase, I didn't put that in the slide, but the step increase comes out to about one point, a little bit over 1% between each step. Now, it changes based on where you're at on, where you're at on the step. All right, so next slide, we're going to talk about bonuses. So with, using the ESRS money, ISS Board approved a $2,000 bonus for full-time and $1,000 for part-time, 20-plus hours. The state gave a $1,000 bonus and an additional $500 for anyone making under $75,000. Then, the next slide, please. There was also attendance and signing bonuses for bus drivers. And then we also added incentive pay for maintenance for additional certifications as well. On the bonus slide, and you may have, we previously heard about, the COVID bonus, that was given to us by the state and only could go to instructional support defined in the budget as teachers, counselors, anybody that was paid from a certified code. So your TAs, your office support, we could not pay those based on the budget, based on the law written in the budget, so.
And the board did ask me to verify that with our region. So there's 11 school systems in our region. We comprise the largest number of students in the state, and none of those districts paid a bonus outside of that state mandate.
So Dr. James, in other words, the statement that was made that it was just a coding error and that other districts were paying that was completely false?
For our region, that would be true. I can't speak for the whole state, but I'm sure there's districts that make a whole lot more money, like Wake County, that could have opted to do that. I didn't reach out to them because...
But it wasn't paid by the state, period?
No. Yes, thank you.
All right. So that brings us to 2022, '23. What are the state raises? Well, we are fortunate. The state legislators, I did not see today if the governor signed or didn't sign. He didn't. We got a webinar tomorrow at 10:30 on that, but state raises 4%. So that, that's great. It's across the board. The teachers will get a step increase plus a, plus a salary increase. We are moving to $15 an hour minimum, so we have to bump the minimum pay for our classified employees to that $15 an hour. The raises will also increase the amount of the supplement that we're going to pay for the classified employees. And then, we're going to continue the three-step bump every five years. And then, one thing I didn't add, that we, we may have to, because if you move that $15 an hour up, that person that's already at $15 an hour is only going to get a 4% raise. How do you, how do you take care of that inequity in the salary schedule? I'm in the preliminary stage and I don't want to jump on. Dr. James and I talked a little bit about it today. I've talked a little bit with Ms. Gillian and HR on looking at ways we can address the inequities. It's not something that can be done all at one time, because that is a huge number to look at, but that is something that we are, as a, the staff in HR and finance are going to look at. How do we address the pay jump from $15 an hour and then those people that were already at above 15, now you got that person making 15. So that's the highlights that we wanted to hit, and I'll turn it over to Dr. James for anything else he would like to add.
So Adam, did you get a total amount that we spent towards employee compensation?
So with the classified, it was 12 to 13 million dollars.
Over the last two years?
Years.
Is that sustainable?
That is not sustainable with your ESRS funding. ESRS funding, the first pot of money has now run out. The second pot of ESRS funding is due to run out September of 2023. And then the, the last pot, which was the largest pot, will be running out in September of 2024. But that is, it's not a sustainable model to keep doing the additional bonuses without additional revenue coming in.
Board members, any questions or comments for Mr. Steele or Dr. James?
So would say, in addition to that, we've raised our substitute pay. We're actually one of the highest in the state when it comes to paying substitutes, trying to, of course, find people to fill positions when teachers are out or we can't fill a vacant position. But we had some, and I think Linda could attest to this, we substantially have raised our subpay. When I talked to other districts, they're struggling to get where we're at. We also, Adam mentioned it, so you're classified by the state based on what you do. So if you go on the state website, they have a whole salary manual that pretty well tells us, if I'm a mate and it's one worker, I start out on step 59, for example. So when we done a salary study, the board asked me to do when I first come on after the 100-day plan, we done a salary study of similar-sized districts and economic tiers and found out that we had some positions that were not on the step the state recommended. So we spent probably, Linda could correct me if I'm wrong, but probably six months to a year rectifying that. So that meant those people got a pay raise, because if you go from step 59 to 61, there, there's a, there's several hundreds, if not $1,000 difference. So we're able to get people on the state recommended, with the exception of office personnel, and of course, they remind me of that, but we knew that this $15 an hour was coming, and we sort of needed to let the dust settle. And we are talking about, and unfortunately, child nutrition workers, if you're a beginning worker there, at the bottom of the scale, it's $11.94, $0.96 an hour, which is pretty well poverty. So I'm glad those individuals are going to 15, but also, that's a huge leap. It's about 11 or 12% increase, and so we're trying to make it equitable as possible. So we know 4% is probably not going to work, so we're going to try to look at 6% and try to meet in the middle. But I think our goal would be, and we've talked about this for a while, is to go to a step for classified on a yearly basis. It makes payroll so much easier than it does to keep up with, with every five years, you get three steps. And if you recall, it was every five years, you got two steps. So we were able to go to three, which additional, you know, $500 to $1,000 for those individuals. So we've taken a lot of the ESRS money and put it back where it belongs, and that's in the classroom or in the hands of our people, plus you paid a bonus. And we would like to do that again this year if possible. So again, after the audit and the dust settles, we know where we're at financially, and then come back to the board and let you know what we think we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. Next, moving on to Agenda Item B, the Teacher Working Condition Survey Update and State of Education, Dr. Berry.
Good evening. So every two years, the, you can go to the next slide, Jada, if you like. Every two years, the state gives the Teacher Working Condition Survey that's been in place since 2006. Originally came out in 2000, but the current iteration goes back to 2006. That survey is incredibly useful, provides information to districts to make data-informed decisions. School improvement teams should use this information. And it measures domains that include time facilities, community involvement, leadership, PD, instruction, retention, equity, safety, new teacher support, and the pandemic's impact. It does change a little every two years, but, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the survey and then talk about the survey as it relates to ISS. So when you review the data, it's really broken down into three analyses, and those are the individual item analyses, the district and state agree analysis, and the historical analysis. And I kind of have a screenshot of each of those, so you can sort of see what it looks like. The individual item analysis gives you really the Likert rating for every question that's on the entire survey. It's a very in-depth survey, probably takes teachers around a half an hour to take, if you're taking it seriously, which I think most teachers do. Principals tend to push that. The second analysis gives you the district-state-agree analysis. And that one, you can kind of compare where your district is to where the state is. And really, when you look through this, this is just a screenshot, but when, when you review our data, you'll really see that ISS is a microcosm of the state, as, you know, the things that we're rated, rated ourselves high on, the state did.
Could I, could I, could I ask?
You can certainly ask any questions.
Since we're all about saving money, could you not find a smaller print that we could save more money with? I mean...
Well, it's a little larger back there. And you should have a copy in your packet as well, if that...
Oh, don't refer me to the packet.
Sorry.
It's even smaller. Oh. I knew there was an explanation. I was just looking for it. Thank you.
All right. So that, that's really what the district-state-agree analysis looks like. And then finally, the third analysis is a historical analysis where we can compare ourselves to how our district rated in 2018 and 2020. So, you know, time, we'll talk about later. That was actually one of the weaker areas of the survey for us. Typically, what you want to see is you want to see things moving more into the green and, and not moving into the red or the blue or the yellow or something like that. So those three analyses really give you the opportunity to sit there and look at the survey and compare, compare yourself to the state, but also compare yourself to what our own data looked like in the past. And then we also have all of this data for each individual school as well. What I'm going to talk about tonight is strictly the district data. We, we've looked at each individual school. Principals use that information. Should talk about that with their school improvement teams. But tonight, we're really just going to talk about the good, the bad, and the ugly of this survey as it relates to the district as a whole. So if you want to jump forward and to the next slide. So we'll start with the good, because that's always a great place to start. 91% of our teachers participated in the survey, 91.6%. That's really good. You always want to be, you know, naturally, any, anytime you increase the number of people participating in any sort of survey, the validity of the survey goes up. That's a good thing. I think 17 of our schools actually had 100% participation. We always want that. We were above the regional average in every single area of the survey. That's also a very positive thing. We broke down the data by the region and also by the state. We were above the state in seven of 10 of the primary domains listed in the survey. That is also really good news as well. And then 84.8% of teachers indicated that ISS is a great place to work and learn. That's kind of one of the most important questions of the entire survey, is do you really like where you work? And naturally, you always want that to be 100%, but 84.8% is not bad when you compare that to, to state averages or some of the things that we've seen in, in other schools. And then 85% of our teachers indicated that they intend to continue teaching in the district next year. Obviously, you want that to be 100% as well, but 85% is above the state average also. We can go to the next slide there. 78% of our teachers indicated that they have access to a broad range of instructional support personnel. That's a really good thing. We want our teachers to feel like they're supported from the CNI department or from EC or et cetera. Naturally, you want those numbers to be higher, but 78% is pretty good. One of our, the greatest strengths in the survey was, we were well above state averages in allowing teachers a large role in their own teaching and learning. So when you look at each of those indicators, selecting their instructional materials, we were 11% over the state average. Grading and assessment, 13% over state averages. Devising teaching techniques, 6%. School improvement planning, 4%. So what that really shows is that our teachers do feel empowered to select their own materials, grade, assess students, et cetera. And I think that's a very positive thing we could agree in. And then on the next slide, 86.1% of administrators indicated that central office provides support when needed. That's big for us. At central office, we want our principals to feel supported. 94.83% of administrators feel that the district has a clearly defined vision for all schools. Again, also a very positive thing. 89.3% of teachers believe that they are empowered to try new things, try new things and improve instruction. That's also a very important thing as well. And then 86.4% of teachers indicated that students feel comfortable reporting incidences of bullying. So those are all very positive things as we look through the data. And then finally, I think there's a few more positives there as well. ISS rated our schools more favorably than state averages when assessing the impact of the pandemic. I can't overstate this one enough. We were pretty high over the state averages when it came to things like reteaching standards, assessing social, emotional lead, needs of students, comparing student progress to pre-pandemic. I think that's in no small part due to the fact that we got students back in school quicker than most, most other districts. And when you look at, there, there's a question in the survey, later in the survey, that says, what do you feel is the greatest problem in your school? And there's a whole host of things to choose from. A large percentage of the state chose teaching and learning post-pandemic. That was actually one of the lower areas in our school district when compared to the state, and I think that's in large part because we got students back in school. So that was a very positive on the survey as well. And then overall, teachers remain satisfied with facility, school leadership, and teacher leadership, without going too heavily into that. Anything over 70% shows up as green. We were, for the past three surveys, we were in the green in every single area in school leadership, teacher leadership, and facilities as a district over the past, over 2018, 2020, and 2022. So all of those areas were fairly positive as well. And then finally, we were over 93% And then finally, we were over ninety-three percent in every category as far as schools have plans in place for tornadoes, fire drills, lockdowns, active shooter, et cetera. All of those drills that schools would run, our teachers felt very strongly that we have plans in place for those things. So those are some of the positives. You know, like any survey, there's going to be some things that are not so good, so we'll talk about some of the negatives as well. So nineteen percent of teachers indicated that they spend more than ten hours per week outside of working hours planning for the coming week, and twenty-five percent indicated that they spend between five and ten hours planning. So anyone who's a teacher, who has been a teacher, that's not really a surprise to you. Teachers do spend a lot of time outside of their working hours, grading papers, planning, et cetera. I think it is of note that they were both above the state average. And when you look at essentially one in five teachers saying they're spending more than ten hours a week planning, and those being above the state averages, that is something to consider as well. Also, ISS teachers rated ISS below state averages in a lot of the areas that measure new teacher support. So those are things that we'll have to take a look at to ensure that we're giving our new teachers the support they need. Some of the other things throughout the district, teachers were less satisfied with the way time is spent. That was one of the screenshots I showed you. When you look at time, we were fairly consistent with the state average, but when you look at the way time is spent versus the 2020 survey and the 2018 survey, we were very consistent with what the state average is, but those were remarkably lower than they were in previous years. In fact, when you look at teachers having appropriate time to plan with colleagues, that dropped from eighty-two point two-seven percent of teachers agreeing that they had ample time for that to sixty-five point one. I think that's in no small part based on the fact, the shortage of substitutes, so teachers were spending more time covering classes and doing things like that. And naturally, that took away from time that they would have otherwise spent planning with colleagues. So that was an area of this survey, not just in ISS, but really throughout the state. I think that was of concern. So moving on to the next one. The survey revealed that teachers have real concerns with managing student conduct. We've heard that in almost every principal eval this year. Dr. James can attest to that, Kelly and John can. Our principals have said that student behavior is just different, you know, as students take home, and education looked different for a while. We've heard that on the buses, we've heard that in the classrooms. Particularly in the areas of students at this school follow the rules of conduct, and school administrators consistently enforce the rules of conduct. Those areas were, again, consistent with state average but lower than previous years as well. And then also, teachers noted increases in physical conflicts among students and vandalism in schools. So thank you, TikTok, for that. And then one of the things that probably bothered me a little when I looked at this was, the percentage of teachers who feel that the Teacher Working Conditions Survey is used as a tool for school improvement declined each of the previous three surveys. In fact, in 2022, that was below the state average. So we certainly intend to speak to our principals about that and make sure that they are sharing this data and their school data with their school improvement teams, because this is a really good catalyst for school improvement in your school. You know, I've taken this as a principal, I've taken this as a teacher, and sometimes as a principal, you may not agree with everything that's said, but it is the teacher's perception of things that are going on in your building, so it's an important catalyst for conversations for school improvement team. But you have to ensure, or we have to ensure, that our principals are actually using this, and our school improvement teams are actually using this. So that one was one we want to make sure we increase that as well. So, and then the third part of this is really the ugly part of the North Carolina Teacher Working Conditions Survey this year, not only in ISS but statewide. So if you want to go to the next slide, Jada. You may have seen this graphic before, but this is a very troubling graphic. Statewide, the number of teachers who indicated that they were quitting their job, leaving the profession in 2022 was seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two teachers. That number more than doubled from 2018. So in the past four years, that number more than doubled. And that also represents seven point two percent of the entire workforce in the state. So you may ask yourself, and I think I may have shared this with a few of you already, but what does seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two teachers look like? So if you want to go to the next slide, well, that's what I just talked about. If you want to go to the next slide. So if you, if every teacher in the following districts left the profession today, Iredale, Statesville, Catawba, Newton Conover, Hickory City, Lincoln, Alexander, Wilkes, Yadkin, Davie County, Rowan Salisbury, Davison County, if every teacher in those districts quit today, that number would still be shy of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-two. That is a big number. So, and that would leave, I think I put the number in there on the next slide, that would leave one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred and forty-six students without a teacher if that many teachers left the profession. And that's if every teacher in all those districts left the profession. That's a big deal. So that's troubling. And I have one more slide I wanted to share as well. Oh, well, before I get to that. So what does that number look like for ISS? That question on the survey for us still represented seven point one-four, which is a little below the state average, percent of teachers saying that they were leaving the profession. So it's a little below, but fairly consistent with the state average, but if you did the math with our teaching workforce, that would still be around ninety teachers who indicated that they were leaving the profession after this year. Another troubling statistic that's not part of the Teacher Working Conditions Survey that I wanted to share with you is on the next slide. So the state measures fortieth-day vacancies every year. And really, fortieth-day vacancies, the purpose of that is, if you haven't filled a vacancy by the fortieth day of school, the chances of you filling that vacancy are pretty slim. So if you look at that number from 2020 to 2021, that number doubled in the fall of 2020 to the fall of 2021. Now, we don't know what that's going to look like in the fall of 2022 yet, but that's a pretty troubling statistic as well for education. So those are just things I think we need to all be mindful of, need to all be aware of. Those are, that's of course a statewide number, but it's an important number to note. We've talked a lot about recruiting and closed session and also an open session and things we're doing. Our principals are trying to get creative. We've talked about some compensation increases that we've done, everything from signing bonus to creating extended classroom teacher positions, and we've kind of thrown a lot of things out there. But when you look at certain things throughout the state, you know, the, most notably, the enrollment in teacher education programs has declined by around thirty-five percent over the past ten years, fifteen years or so. Those things should be troubling to all of us, not only in Iredale, Statesville, but also throughout the state. Any questions on any of those things?
Thank you, Dr. Berry. One question. The seven point one-four percent of teachers in ISS that said they intend to leave the profession, does that mean they're leaving teaching totally, or they could be going to another district?
That means they're leaving teaching totally.
Okay. Thank you.
I just have to make the comment that I've made before. If we set aside the teacher that we're going to be involved with for the next several years, if a student wants to learn, this is a good place to come, because those other figures show that the system is waiting for that student and has the capability of teaching him to a very good level.
Yes, sir.
Couple of questions, if I could. You mentioned, in some of the good, eleven percent, thirteen percent above state average. Assume all this data is public record?
Yes, yes. Anyone can simply Google North Carolina Teacher Working Conditions Survey. It's very easy to find, so I'm just saying that for...
Sure. And, you know, with my background, of course, I'm going to ask this question. Did anyone do a standard deviation analysis?
Yeah, I can answer that.
Okay. Because it'd be really interesting to see if we were above, I don't know if you know about two sigma analysis, ninety-five percent, see if we were in that top five percent for some of these things.
Yeah.
See where statistically we are different, or statistically eh, we're a little less, but it's still the same thing. And that's why I was wondering if that, if anyone, or if you'd seen or if that analysis came with it.
Yeah, I can't answer that. Really, all I did with this was sort of take the state averages and determine if we were higher and simply do it in percentages. I didn't delve that heavily into it.
I guess the other thing I noticed, you talked about in the bad, I think that one, on one of the slides where you said throughout the district, region, state, teacher less satisfied in the way time is spent, I think if you put a stamp of COVID across that, I think that would be an explanation, personally, in my opinion, anyway.
Yes, and that's why I said, if you really look at the data, we were very consistent with state averages, but what you saw is you saw a drop across the state in all of that from 2020 to 2022. And certainly, COVID played a very large part in some of the aftermath of that, in the trouble finding substitutes and things like that stretched our teachers thinner. I think we're all fairly well aware of the why, but it's certainly something we've got to keep working at to see if we can help our teachers in any way that we can.
In another part of the bad, you had that nineteen percent spent more than ten hours outside work and twenty-five percent spent more than five to ten planning. If you add that up, that's forty-four percent. If you round it to one sig fig, that's five. So approximately fifty percent of our teachers are spending more than five to ten, spending five hours or more a week planning. Is that, would you, would that be a reasonable assessment?
Yeah, that's a reasonable assessment. I think you've seen a couple of things. One, those were above the state averages. That was part of the reason I put them in the bad. I think anyone who's ever taught knows that you're going to spend some time outside.
Oh, that's understandable. I think any of us that teach understand that.
Yeah, I think probably one of the differences, again, to, you know, take it back to some of the things we've already talked about, is if I'm spending my planning period covering another class, you know, I may be compensated for that because we have taken care of teachers with compensation for that. However, that's time I could have otherwise been grading papers or planning my lessons or something else, which is going to increase the amount of time you're spending outside of the work, working.
I just want to make sure, hopefully, Dr. James as well, it's, you know, I don't know how much time we expect our teachers, or your expectations are, that they spend outside of the, you know, class, the work week. I assume there's some, it's always taken home in grading, but it just seems a little high in keeping, retains teachers, which is what we've got to do. Hopefully, hopefully this doesn't continue and we can address this going forward.
And that's part of the reason I mentioned it was...
Thank you.
That very reason, yes, sir.
Mr. Howe.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Berry, you were a teacher, you principal, and when you and I were teaching, we taught because we liked the profession, and it wasn't about money. It wasn't about money. We really liked what we did. And I don't know if teachers today feel that way, and I know we're always trying to get them higher pay, but let's not forget working conditions. And I was impressed with this, but, you know, we ought to improve our working conditions as much as possible, because, like I say, it's about the love of the profession, not so much the money. Thank you.
You're absolutely right.
Any additional board member comments? Thank you, Dr. Berry.
So Chairman Carver, one of the biggest things I hear, there are several ways we collect data. We do a classified, Jada, correct me if I'm wrong, it used to be every month, or is it every quarter? Dr. Noding, the Classified and Certified Advisory, is that quarterly or monthly?
Twice a year.
Twice a year. So we do ask for classified and certified people to ahead of time. There's an individual in each building, a classified and certified rep that's identified in every school. So we ask them to collect questions ahead of time. Then what we try to do for the Zoom call is actually answer those questions or have answers available and let everyone hear them. So it is an opportunity for a classified and certified to give us additional feedback during the year. We also have the Superintendent's Student Advisory Council, which, of course, COVID put a damper on that, but we're getting ready to start that back up in the fall. So it's a way for students to give us input. And on the off-year, the Teacher Working Conditions Survey, we do an internal survey. We've gone, because of, I always hear this, but just like the Teacher Working Conditions Survey, they don't really even talk to us about that until it's ready to come out. I was told three days before it become public, I could look at some of the raw data. If I saw anything that seemed out of place, I could bring that up at the time, but it would be hard for NSA to hack the way they do these surveys, so it's just not possible. And so we moved to an outside platform to make sure it was secure, what I get. And so what we do get for feedback goes towards principal evaluation. Principals hear about it. So our expectation is, we've got a meeting coming up here in the next few weeks, is to talk about the Teacher Working Conditions Survey. There's actually classes that we take in preparation for administration on how to delineate this data and talk to staffs about it and put it in the school improvement plan. The other thing that Adam didn't mention tonight, but if you look at the amount of supply money, Adam and I looked at what we, there's two different categories of supply money that we put out to schools. It comes out to about ninety-seven dollars a student. So if you figure an average class, there's twenty students, you're looking at about eighteen hundred dollars for materials and supplies. However, we're mandated by the state to have a school improvement team. That team is made up of teachers in the school. They really meet to decide what the goals of the district are, the state are, and how the school's going to close their gaps and where they're going to spend the money. So that doesn't mean that Martin's teaching automotive and he automatically gets ninety-seven dollars a student. The school improvement team might decide that we're going to buy the software program that helps a lot more students than his twenty automotive students, and the money goes to it. So the schools get ninety-seven dollars per student is what it looks like in the upcoming budget. So the school improvement teams decide where to spend that money on resources. So I did want to get that out. So there's a lot of ways to give feedback. I don't disclose that feedback. When somebody emails me, I don't forward it to the board or other people and say, you know, so-and-so sent me this email. I look into it, investigate it. My job, I think, is to work for, of course, I work for the board, but for all employees to make sure we can come to a resolution to any issues that come up. You can't do that without trust. So there's a lot of things we deal with. But one common thing I've heard this year, as a matter of fact, I have a meeting tomorrow with several key people in law enforcement, is student behavior. We, and it does take a village. So we, what goes on when the kids leave our site about twenty-three percent of the week, if they're an academic student, if they're not an athlete or in athletics, they're only with us twenty-three percent of the time in a seven-day week. So that other, almost eighty percent, ends up back in our school building. So we do suffer from that if there's an altercation in the neighborhood. Often, it spills over into the halls of our schools. So I've heard it from every single school and every single principal that student behavior has been the most challenging this year than it's ever been. So we are working towards that. We're having meetings with community people. We have a community liaison that's already started working with different groups on how we can work together as a community to make sure our kids are ready to learn when they enter the school building. And hopefully, we'll see a de-escalation of behaviors in our schools this coming year. So that will help. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Next, we have final approval of our hosted phone system contract with Mr. Ivy.
Chairman Carver, Dr. James, members of the board, just wanted to bring to you the final bids for the hosted phone system. This was something that was approved with our budget that was sent forward to the county, so this funding is not additional funding in any way, shape, or form. We did actually go through the bid process using our membership of the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, which is similar to a state contract. And so that's why you will see for each of the three bids, the actual total monthly reoccurring charges are exactly the same, because they're required to only provide us with the exact same services. Where you see a difference in those bids is in the one-time, non-recurring charges, which is the installation of the phone system, the setup, and actually making sure that it's up and running and appropriate. If approved tonight, the phone system would go through the process of having to switch over. It takes a good bit of time to program, as you can imagine, that many phones and that type of system. So they're anticipating all three, that it would be a December timeframe, because they would need a time where we're essentially have some sort of a break to be able to start turning those on. So based off of the bids, York Communication, which is local here, did have the lowest one-time, non-reoccurring charges. And so based on procurement guidelines, I would request that we approve for York to move the school district from an on-premise phone system to a hosted phone system with a Vayaa cloud office.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Howe.
This is, this is so much different than what tried to get pushed on us about two years ago. I respect the board and its diligence, and thank you for your hard work in getting three bids for us and an equitable deal. So having said that, I'm going to... So having said that, I'm going to make a motion that we accept this York Communications bid.
I'll second that with a question. Probably the same question everybody else has. York Communications, this one time to be paid at capital expense, I mean, that's a third of the other one and a half of the other one. Do we have any idea why it's so much less? I mean, did they miss, they didn't miss something, did they?
No, York has been doing our phone systems for us for quite some time. And so they're very aware of all that is needed. And the others would have to do quite a bit of analysis and send in a lot more staff to be able to, to actually get the system up and running. So we've been using York for quite some time.
And Mr. Ivy, you don't foresee any additional expenses associated with this? This is not something that's going to come back and we're going to need 20 or 30, 40 more thousand dollars to fix or finish?
No, I do not anticipate that. We've gone through all of that with them upfront. And so what we do anticipate is the only thing that there could possibly be is you may need to add a user here or there, which is not a, a very large expense at all. But we are anticipating that we'll actually reduce the amount of users you would have per se, seeing as the phone client allows them to take their extension with them. So it, it goes along with their computer. They can also download the client onto their phone and use their phone to actually call out where it would appear that it's coming from their office phone. So we should see a reduction.
Final question, you believe that we'll have this done by the, when we return for the spring semester, I guess that would be of 2023? You think that'd be?
Yes, that's the timeline they gave me. And I did check with them. I said, if we were given a green light as of July 11th, when would you anticipate it would be turned on? And their answer was December, all three companies.
Any further board member questions? I apologize, I went before you.
Mr. Chairman, just one. So I'm a parent and I call my child's school. So everything's going to be the same?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just looking over this, with York, it has a, the York Communications fee was basically be like 12,000, it said, to put them in. The cloud office, one-time direct cost, with the VA cloud office, 51375, one-time charges. If a device goes bad, what's, is that within the recurring or non-recurring charges?
So the devices do have a warranty on them, so the phones do. And then after their, and I believe it's a year after that one year, the school would have to be responsible for it, which is currently what our model is. If you have a phone and it's broken, right now, the phones are in the classrooms, are located by the classroom door. So you have a lot of phone breakage of students accidentally hitting them with backpacks. This would move the phones to the teacher's desk so that we would not, no longer have that issue. So we would anticipate that would go down.
And so that's actually part of, it would be part of the cost, but it's not included in the, it would be in part of that cost for any, any provider.
That we go with, with phones.
It's just an extra, actually, I hate to say, an extra budget line that?
It is. And like I said, we typically, because those are accidental things that happen, the schools have been able to, a phone for a school is a small cost, but phones for the school system is a big cost.
Gotcha. And by moving it, you anticipate that to go down?
Yeah, actually, we do anticipate that. We actually anticipate that we'll have a reduced number because you won't need as many extensions with a hosted system. You have to have put a phone in like every teacher's lounge and things. You won't need that anymore because you'll be able to get in touch with people on campus much easier.
So there'll be fewer phones and that money that they would not be putting into replacing them, they could use on the other things because it's coming out of the principal's budget, I assume?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm assuming too that somewhere in there, hoping not, I don't know, there's going to be a downtime between the switch of the system we have and the new system? Is there going to be a downtime?
There will not be a downtime. So that's why they want to make sure it's all ready to turn on all at one time. So they spend all these months programming it and then they essentially turn it all on. So when they turn it all on, you automatically switch to the, from one to the other.
Well, I was going to say, if there's a downtime, I don't want it announced that we're going to have one. Okay, that there's not going to be one is good. Thank you.
I would assume that's why they're wanting to switch over the holidays in December.
They picked that date as a longer date than they anticipate. So that essentially it could be done over a Thanksgiving break. It's not a long period of time. The, the long, the time it takes to program them is where you spend the most time.
All right, board members, I have a motion by, I believe it was Mr. Howe and a second by Mr. Kelly. Any further discussion on this motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. So six to nothing. Move forward with the approval for the phone system contract. Next, we have a property purchase at Barium. It's a Barium property adjacent to South Aral High School. Mr. Ivy for that.
Yes, we have a property next to Barium is 18.601 acres. This purchase price would be for 10,000 per acre for 180, just over $186,000. We would use our ISS capital fund balance to make this purchase. And the reason for this purchase is to increase the property's overall site and protect the boundary offset for potential use of that property, especially with the new developments that are going in around. We want to be able to make sure we have enough property to access the other side of the property that runs toward East Mambo. So we have worked with Barium. We finished our due diligence, which means we've done our phase one environmental scan. And we're at the final stages, which is board approval and then making the county commissioners aware of the purchase. And so I'm seeking approval to finalize this so we can go through the next step and then set a closing date.
I'll make a motion that we accept this bid and purchase the property.
Motion by Mr. Kelly, second by Mr. Howe. Any further board member comments on this land acquisition? Hearing no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Six to nothing, we'll purchase that land. Next, iReady curriculum purchase by Ms. Kelly Cooper and Ms. Jonathan Ribbick.
Good evening, Chairman Carver, members of the board, Dr. James. As per Board of Education policy, approval is required for any purchase over, or contract over $90,000. And we are asking for board approval to purchase the iReady program with Curriculum Associates for grades K through eight. And the total cost would be $450,918.99. This is a savings from last year and I'm going to tell you now, we had to work back and forth quite a bit to get this down here. It started off about $60,000 higher than this and we said no. We would like it to be less than last year if possible. We actually got them to below that cost. And what that includes is our math diagnostic assessments and instructional lessons for grades K through five in math. And in reading, the same thing for grades four through five, because the state already does supply us with the M-class reading program. So we don't want to purchase a program when we already have one from the state.
And then in middle school, we have the diagnostic as well for grade six through eight and the online instruction. Most of our schools have requested the teacher toolbox, which gives them lessons and ready-made lesson plans that they can pull off. And once they look at the diagnostic, if it says that a kid is still struggling with their R-controlled valves, that's something that secondary teachers are generally not trained classically in teaching reading. And so it gives us a lesson plan that we can follow very easily to be able to close those gaps. So then also part of our, part of our restart plan is that schools can request items. And one of their requests was from Troutman Middle School. They did request a book for every student in reading and math, so that's part of this as well.
And keeping this consistent programming and assessments that helps schools to have the same assessment data they have in the past so they can compare between the years. And this is actually requested, Ms. Cooper and I, each year at the end of the year, always ask our teachers and our administrators, let us know what programs you'd like for us to use. And iReady is one that they continue to let us know that it does help them with the assessments. And as Ms. Cooper says, it does help them with the lessons that go along with it. And so using ESRS funds, textbook waivers, and actually there is an ESR fund that must be used on digital curriculum, and that's $144,593 for our district. So it does align perfectly with this.
These are the programs we've been using for how many years now?
I believe this will be our fifth year.
Fifth year.
With this one.
And you're going to get this program this year for less money?
Yes, sir.
Did this involve a hammer?
Which, like I said, the first quote was $60,000 more than this.
Yeah.
So yes, Ms. Cooper got out, she's scared. Whenever you want to go negotiate anything, bring her with you.
Send her.
I just saw, it just kept going back forth, back forth. And she did not back that, she said, I'm going to say no if we keep doing this and...
Kelly, the hammer.
She is the hammer.
So that, yeah.
Negotiate the next, she's coming with me.
Yeah, that was my question. Why do we have to give up to get it down below from previous years?
Some of the schools, a book for every student because it is accessible through Canvas. It's downloadable into the Canvas account. So we did give some of that up. But yeah, we had our price point and we weren't going to go over our price points.
And I assume those schools that aren't getting those books didn't want those books. Is that correct?
I'm not going to say they didn't want them, but we're going to recycle. Some of those schools had some things on their shelves. So I'm kind of, my husband will tell you I'm the world's biggest penny pitcher. So I pull those back in and I distribute those back out if they have any that they didn't use them. So that's what we'll do.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
And all this is available electronically. And we're doing a one-to-one rollout this fall.
Cool. Mr. Howe.
We've got some kids that need it in print.
And that's understandable, yeah.
If need be.
Thank you.
Mr. Howe.
Mr. Chairman, we, we've talked about this in, in a Cal meeting, this program at length. And I think it's a good show. Thank you for your hard work. Did y'all coordinate your colors on purpose?
I think we did. We, honestly, we worked together for so long, we do it. And Dr. James, we come to work more times coordinated than we know what to do, so.
Mr. Page, did you also have a comment you wanted to make?
I just wanted to say that, speaking with a lot of the teachers and some administrators and principals, they're just so glad that we're staying with some. I mean, if years and so many times you just jumped from this to the other and they like iReady, I've heard, you know, good things about it. And they're just thankful we're, we're staying with something. So I wanted to thank you for that because I do know that most of our teachers and staff like iReady.
And this comes from them. Like I said, at the end of the year, we say to them, what programs do you want? What will help you all? And this is one that they, the top of their list.
Well, that's another part of your school improvement plan from a district and from the school. So when we do a principal eval, our question is, so what else do you need from us? What are you getting that you like and what are you not getting that you need? And that goes back to their schools for school improvement planning. So I'll bet you that every school that uses iReady has it written into their school improvement plan as one of their resources.
Yes.
Yeah, we even ask them, what do you want us to take off your plate? So we, we ask all of those questions to them.
Shoemaker, anything? All board members have had an opportunity to comment. Does anybody have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we, make a motion to accept the iReady programs.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Kelly, second by Dr. Knight. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. So six to nothing, we approve the iReady curriculum purchase. Next, we'll go on to item agenda G, which is a policy revision. This was a second reading by Mr. Howell. This is something that had been approved some years ago and somehow got left out and is now, we want to make sure that we have it included. It's policy number 3620 Extracurricular Activities in Student Organizations. Mr. Howe.
And I'd just like to say to the board that the lawyer got a hold of this and changed my words, but it keeps us out of trouble, certainly keeps me out of trouble. So thank you for that and I appreciate the board's approval for this since it was approved in 2017. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the policy 3620 as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept this policy.
Second. A motion by Mr. Page, second by Mr. Kelly. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Six to nothing, we approve the policy revision. Next, we have the Northview Academy approval. I think this was Mr. Ivy or, I'm sorry.
No, no, the assistant principal from Northview.
I apologize. I apologize.
Northview is here. If you'll press that button and turn the green light on, yes.
Hi there, my name's Alexandra Shadray. I'm the assistant principal of what we're going to know hopefully as formerly Presley. And we would like to officially ask to be requested that we change our name to Northview Academy. We'd like to say that we are both thankful and excited, our entire staff, at the opportunity that this new campus is giving our students. We're going to be growing our programs because it is a larger space and we've already gotten several programs lined up for next year. One, what I'd just like to say that I'm super excited for our high school students. They're going to actually be doing entrepreneurship through screen printing and getting their Math 1 in a real-world application setting at the same time they're doing screen printing. So we are very excited that we have this space where we can expand opportunities for our students. And I want to thank the maintenance staff and Mr. Ivy, who physically moved our school in two days. They were both effective and efficient in that. And we were very excited and thankful to have this great opportunity.
I think I speak on behalf of the entire board that we're also excited for you and very happy for this opportunity as well. See, Mr. Howe, wants to make a comment?
I just want to, I was going to ask if you all moved in?
We are moved in.
Good.
Not settled, but we're getting settled.
It takes a while.
It does.
I want to, want to ask you to do something. Anything you think that you need to improve that school, whether it be security or anything else, please don't ever hesitate to ask.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We will, thank you. Appreciate you.
And this is essentially just a name change, just from Presley to Northview because of the move.
I make a motion that we change to Northview Academy.
Change the name from, okay. Thank you, Mr. Howe. I have a motion by Mr. Howe, second by Mr. Kelly. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Six to nothing, we change that. Final agenda item, the sale of Mountmore School contract. Mr. Ivy, if you could come forward for that.
Chairman Carver, Dr. James, members of the board, we have received an offer for the purchase of the Mountmore property at $6.5 million. The property's assessed tax value is somewhere in the $4 million. We've actually done analysis of that and this is above what the fair analysis would be on the property. And so we would like to make a request that we approve the contract for purchase. Once the contract is approved, please note that there is a process of upset bid that would have to go through and the contract, as well as those agreements, would need to be signed and have already been screened from our attorney.
So this just allows us essentially to move forward with the upset bid process then at this time?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further discussion by board members? Any further comments or questions for Mr. Ivy? Have a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion and, and in my understanding is we still can back out. Is that right? No?
Not once we sign the contract.
So we'll, if you sign the contract, we'll move forward with the upset bid process, which means we'll advertise the property in local newspapers, et cetera. They'll have 10-day, anybody, anybody on God's green earth will have 10 days to put in an upset bid. And that upset bid has got to basically be 5% higher than the purchase price of $6.5 million. And they also have to, not only that, but they have to put down 5% down. So that's a significant amount of cash, you can have about $325, $350,000. But you've got to have cash on hand. So to do that, they would have to put down that amount and then enter into a contract for 5% higher than $6.5 million. And if they did that, then we would go with that new bid and then we, we would re-advertise again until somebody just finally does not put in an upset bid. But if no upset bid is put into place or a defective upset bid is put into place, such as they don't have the money to put, put the down payment or something, the deposit, then we would, we would be bound by, by this bid. If you do get an upset bid later on and you ultimately just decide that you don't want to sell it, you could reject, you could reject everything at that point in time. But if we don't get an upset bid, we are bound by, by this contract moving forward.
And just to clarify, our initial asking price was?
We were in the process of... Uh, we were in the process of, um, offering it for 7 million. Uh, there were multiple interested parties who had already come forward asking about the property. We did let them know that we were in the process of selecting a Realtor to, um, you know, post it. At that time, we did receive the bid, uh, the offer to purchase.
If we move forward, even if we had to accept the bid at 6.5 million, that would still put us clearing more money than, than we would, uh, than if we had sold it at 7 and had to pay the commission?
That is correct.
For a Realtor.
This was higher than what we would have received.
Still a net gain.
A net gain, yes.
And we may end up with an upset bid over the 6.5 million.
That is correct.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Howell, a second from Mr. Kelly. Any further board member discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Six to nothing, we vote to move forward with that. Uh, tonight, we have our, uh, board member comments.
Very quickly, uh, if, uh, I've, I've visited several camps, uh, I, I tell you, if there's, uh, children in Aridale County, they've got so much to do, the school system's so active, uh, in our camps, uh, managed to, uh, get by a couple of days to see the rockets, rovers, and robots, which, uh, is always an exciting camp. Uh, then we had an inventor's camp that was, uh, really kind of neat. Uh, it took children through inventing things, went on was to catch a jellyfish in a thing of water. How are you, anyway, it was just, it was, it was, it was making the kids think, and it was hands-on stuff. Uh, visited two culinary camps, uh, they were, they were just really great, the kids were enjoying that. Uh, I visited an, uh, automotive and transportation camp, and, uh, it, 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 that was for middle schoolers, and one of the competitions was doing a NASCAR pit stop. They have two NASCAR cars down, and, uh, that was just, those kids talking about having a ball, and they were keeping score, and I, I must say, there was a team of three, uh, middle school girls, and they were absolutely the most, they, if they would mess up, they were mad at each other, it was just, I, I got period tickle watching them fight to be, and they were number two, and, uh, of course, they were middle schoolers, and those NASCAR tires are pretty heavy. And there was one big middle schooler, he was the only kid could pick the tire up by himself and put it on. So his team, they had it all figured out, all his job was to do was pick the tire up, and the other two were doing the lug nuts.
Sort of like passing to Charles Barkley, right?
Yeah, yeah, it was just, but anyway, uh, and they did a lot of other stuff, but.
Where were these camps held at?
Uh, the, uh, culinary camps were here and had two different instructors in two different weeks.
Like Katz?
Yeah, in the kitchen here, uh, it was instruct, our instructor from Katz was one week, and Mr. Roger stepped out. I think the other instructor was from West Aridale, and he did a camp based on the show, uh, Chopped, and the kids were ki- kind of competing, and, and that was, again, hands-on, but my gosh, you know, it, it, taking culinary, learn how to measure, that, you know, they're doing recipes, I mean, there's so many, you, you know, the same thing with the, with the robot camp. I mean, there was so many things that they did that were tricking them into learning math and, and how to work together. Uh, it, so all that was, uh, a very neat, now, the, uh, automotive camp was at our Automotive Center, the, uh, uh, inventor's camp was at, uh, Unity, and, uh, again, uh, it was no reason our kids, and we've got reading camps, we've got, uh, STEM camps, uh, all sorts of, so many camps, and, uh, it, it just makes you feel good when you get out and see, uh, these, so many kids enjoying things during the summer, and, and the fact that, uh, our, our teachers are out there doing it for them, so, uh, it, they're great, we still got some more camps going on for the rest of the summer, so, but I, I just want to say.
Fantastic. Thank you for sharing that, we appreciate that. Dr. Knight?
Unfortunately, some people take away my thunder when they talk about things. I want to talk.
You were at a different school for a different camp, aren't you?
Yeah, well.
You were launching big rockets.
I was, I was in New Mexico launching rockets with my university rocket team, but I did want to mention the, uh, second annual, so it's hopefully it's the annual, um, Rockets, Rovers, and Robots camps. Um, I wasn't able to work with it this year, but I was able to go see Dr. Lester a couple times, saw some of the teachers that worked with it, talked to some of the students, and, uh, this is a good one, this is a real good one. Um, and just to give you an idea of the problems, and there, there was an article in the newspaper and Aridale Free News on it, um, but just to give you an idea, I had a student call me up last week and asked, that was in Rockets and Rovers, Robots last year, she called me up, she had went to space camp, uh, this summer, and she was like, I still want to continue with my goal of career of working in space, maybe going to space, what do I need to do going forward? So I had a nice conversation with her and her parents for about 30, 45 minutes, and, uh, these things can make a difference, they really can, and it's, and I liked what was in one of the articles, where you're teaching them and they don't really know it.
Yeah.
And you're tricking them almost, uh, bait and switch, as Dr. Lester said, and, uh, a lot of education, I think, should be like that at times, and, um, I, it's just some really good stuff going on. Um, I also like the fact our teachers make extra money doing it, and if we can put a little more money in their pocket, I think that's a good thing. But, uh, just congratulations on that, and, uh, just the more camps we can have, the better, summer, the better, from my opinion.
Additional board member comments? Dr. James?
Thank you, Chairman Carver. I just want to tell the staff how much we do appreciate them and the hard work they've done this year. Uh, you'd never would have told me that after the first year of COVID, it could have got harder, but I believe it did. I think it was even tougher the second year, and, uh, now we hear about variants and everything else coming. Uh, we just need to keep kids in school, if at all possible. They're behind. Um, I am happy with what we've been able to do for our employees. Uh, is it enough? It'll never be enough. Uh, we, we always need to do more. I will say that kudos to the governor and the General Assembly, it's probably one of the best education budgets that just got signed into law today that we've had in many, many years. I think it added an additional billion dollars to education, so that's going to be able to help us raise salaries up, but again, um, even with that, the beginning teacher in the state of North Carolina is at $37,000, and, you know, some of the things that, uh, we've done at the state has not helped us. We used to have teacher, uh, teaching fellows, so if you went to any state university, your four-year degree was paid for, as long as you agreed to teach in an at-risk school for three years. We eliminated that, we brought it back, it's still not back at all state universities. We paid teachers 10% if they got their master's degrees, we cut that out, but, but, uh, Sir Isaac Newton said, for every action, there's an opposite and equal reaction. And so what happened was, we also shut down university master's programs, and we stopped paying that 10%. So, so it had an, an alternate effect also on our universities, uh, and I think that has some, some, uh, something to do with the fact that our education programs have gone down, because people would seek out the 10%. I got my master's in school administration, not to go in administration, I got it to get the 10%, so I was actually paid something that was a livable wage, and then I was going to do my master, or, or national boards, which I have, which is another 12%. So in North Carolina, we're one of the states that has the highest number of national board certified teachers. It's not because we have that many motivated teachers, it's because of the 12%, because of what we pay teachers. So, um, that's unfortunate. So I'm hoping, uh, thank again, thanks to the state, thanks to the governor, I think we really have to take a look at what we pay our state employees across the state, whether it's teachers, classified, uh, has always been underpaid, to, to pay a cafeteria worker $11.94, I mean, come on, um, that, that's just ridiculous. So I am happy for those people, uh, that is an enterprise fund, so it can't lose money, so, uh, we're going to have to shorten our pencils and figure out how we're going to do that. We were hoping for a reprieve from our federal government to continue to free and reduce lunch, uh, for the remainder of this coming school year at least. Uh, we, we got a little bit, we didn't get everything that we wanted, um, and it's sort of a shame, uh, as I told, uh, some federal politicians, we can spend the money we spend, um, outside of our country, it looks like we could feed our children for free in our country, and it's a shame that we can't. Um, I don't mind my tax dollars any day going to feed a child, I, I think that's a noble cause, but for some reason, we can't seem to get a bill out of the feds to do that. But we'll continue to push and advocate for that. Uh, but again, we couldn't do this without the great people, it's, it's been hard, uh, it's going to be hard with the positions we'll have open this year. We have paid, anytime we've asked a teacher to give up their planning period, we paid them additional funding. If we asked a teacher to teach more than their planning period, if they look after two classes, we gave them 33% more, so we, we look for multiple ways to compensate our teachers. We also applied for and got a $23 million federal grant that, uh, is a teacher-school leadership grant, which allows us to take some master teachers and pay them upwards of $5,000 to $7,000 extra to be a master teacher. Uh, we, that grant's good for three years, and we can re-opt for year four and five, so we are doing everything we can possible to look for additional monies to provide our teachers the best salaries possible. Um, and then, you know, again, once the dust settles from this budget, we'll be coming back, seeing what we can do about a bonus, and also looking at the supplement. But I will tell you that, uh, Mr. Steele said this, but when we done our classified survey, most counties do not give a classified supplement, so they have raised people up to what the state says the pay scale level they should be, and they get no supplement. So I am happy that we're not cutting that out. So I am happy that we're doing that, we would like to get it back up to 6%, I think that's one of the goals of the board. Teachers, we would love to be, uh, we need to get to 9% or 10% to be competitive in our area, uh, for every 1% increase, it's a million dollars out of the budget, uh, for teachers. Uh, for classified, that's about 500, 600,000, so if you raise both of them 1%, you're looking at about a million and a half dollars. So, uh, we have a plan to get there, it, it's just going to take a little bit of time to do it. So again, we do evaluate our teachers, we do try to put resources in the classroom,